All right, six o'clock, call me to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Broker will not be here tonight, Gil?
Here.
Broker?
Here.
Schudie?
Here.
Krieger, Okter, five present. Approve the minutes of the April 23rd meeting.
Motion approved.
Second? Go ahead. Motion by Broker, second by Okter, approve the minutes of the April 23rd. Twenty twenty-four city council meeting, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have any public comment tonight? Yes, sir?
Everyone would like to go first, and if you could state your name and your address for the minutes first, thank you.
Larry Bondi, address is four one two Rockville Road, Keel. Two reasons why I'm here. First of all, I'm your new county supervisor, District fourteen, from Manitowoc County. I want to introduce myself, which is primarily a Manitowoc County portion of the city of Keel, and I'm open to any comments or concerns you ever have. Please feel free to reach out to me. Secondly, I have been requesting that you review your storage shed garage ordinance in the city of Keel. And the reason why is I had talked to John Broker in Germany Frey explaining, we have two acres on the river, taxed with river frontage, so we have recreational things, canoes, kayaks, boats, but we can't get shed under the current ordinance to put our recreational stuff in. We also have two acres, my wife has this great big lawnmower and leaf blower, and I don't have no shed space to put that in. So they encouraged me that we have a variance process in the city of Keel, to go forward. I talked to Cassie to make sure I want to do this right, and she explained how I need to pay the four hundred and fifty dollars for the variance committee review, and I believe it was a building permit. So I thought, okay, I have a process to move forward. Then, being part of our lake association on the Rockville Dam, and talking to Jerry Vandemers, who's on the committee, he says, don't waste your money. He goes, it's almost embarrassing, they take four hundred and fifty dollars, and we have never once granted a variance. The way the ordinance is written is so restrictive that they cannot do it. So then I asked, who else is on there? And he said Keith Rocky. So I was a very good friend with Keith Rocky over the years, and I said, give Keith a call, just see what's in the tray. He said the exact same thing, right? And Keith, two weeks, everyone's, go before the city, I'm begging you. He goes, we're taking four hundred and fifty bucks every time somebody has a variance review, and we never say no. We can't, the way the ordinance is written. Jack Black, there was another one, I just ran into the other day, Oriston County business, he's on there. He said, he's the one person who votes against it, and he said, even though the rules say you can, because that's what the variance is, but he said the same thing, the three of your five members, and I haven't talked to Clancy, I don't know the other one, but I think there's an issue, but three of your five review members say that they have never once granted a variance. I understand there needs to be processes, a tenth of an acre in the city of Keel should never be treated the same as two acres on the river, or six acres on the outside, but still city of Keel. The variance process should be there for those reasons, and you can look at things and adjust it. But from what I'm hearing from your variance committee, and if you don't listen to me, I am begging you to bring them into one of your meetings and listen to them, because I'm not spending the four hundred and fifty dollars at their request, because I won't give it to them. Do you have any questions for me? Otherwise, appreciate your time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robin Decker.
City of nine two zero, Keel, four street. We're concerned about the walk bridge down by Hingis Park. The railing that is right now laying on the ground for the last nine months, when is that going to be put in place? What they have up there right now, this orange snow fence with stakes in the ground, and the wood railings going up and down the steps, that ain't holding nothing back.
Do you know the status of that? I know Chris got quotes on, they got quotes on that.
The railings that are down there, they were made wrong for the project, so it's not just a matter of not installing them, we're waiting on new ones to be fabricated. This has been an ongoing process with the contractor, but the latest update I have is that the fabrication will be done by six three, and then install ASAP after.
By six three, so they will be installed by the twenty-second, for sure?
I cannot promise that, right now the schedule I have-
Well, I know-
It should, it should be, I would think, two weeks ought to be plenty.
Okay.
We'll push that.
Well, I know they have the celebration of Keel down in Hingis Park, that following Monday, and our concern is, we booked that park for our wedding for the twenty-second, and all means that that bridge was going to be complete, and it just makes some pretty crappy pictures.
I understand. We're not, we're not real happy with the situation either, with the contractor, and if they're going to be done by six three, we ought to be able to get those in.
Okay, thank you.
We'll push it. Thank you.
So, I'd like to ask, what, why is the old railing still there? Is it-
That's a good question.
They should pick it up.
It's not our property, okay? It's still the property of the company that made it.
Okay.
Okay? And they haven't given us approval to do anything with it, and they haven't picked it up. So, we, and I guess from when I talked to Chris, he said, after the last payment is issued, then it becomes our property and we can dispose of it. Otherwise, they can come back and say, we're disposing of their property. Now, I don't know why they can't get it out of there, because I asked about that too, but that's kind of been going along with this whole thing, with all of the delays and the delays and the delays.
Well, we should charge them storage.
Well, I've got news for you, we should be charging them more than storage.
Well, and they're coming out of here.
I do, I do think now that-
Well, right. It's an eyesore, it doesn't belong there.
Right.
It's probably a hazard.
It is. And the only thing that I can say is, I believe we are now in the timeframe where the company is forfeiting, I don't know what the dollar amount is, but X amount of dollars per day to get this done. And I know the other thing was, we did look into, because I asked Chris about this too, about having somebody else fabricate the railings, and he strongly suggested we did not go that route because of the way the contract was written, and I don't, I'm not a contract guru, okay?
Well, it seems like the new, the correct railings are being worked on.
Yes.
That's not the issue. The issue is that it's there, it doesn't belong there. Either they need to come and get it, or we should move it. That's the way I look at it.
When they come with the new railings, we'll make sure they take the lead.
Just a heads up, the, I don't know how many of you have actually gone down there and walked on that, where the makeshift fence or whatever you want to call it. That is a hazard, and if somebody would trip going down the steps, grab a hold of that, they're going down. They're, they're, that ain't going to hold up a two-year-old kid. That little wooden makeshift thing that they got there, and then they're going to end up with splinters and everything else off of that. That is, I mean, an elderly person, they put their hand on there and slide it down, they're going to end up with a handful of slivers. You're going to, I'm just saying, if there's a lawsuit coming, and somebody all of a sudden falls because of that, make sure it goes towards this company that's holding back on getting it fixed, not towards the city.
Okay.
Then, it'd be better off not even having that up, let it fall down the hill.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Decker.
Any other?
One more. My name's Teresa Rickwald, my home address is nine sixteen Third Street, Keel. I'm here today as a business owner and taxpayer in the city of Keel. My name is Teresa Rickwald, I'm from Stop and a Dime, Dart Girl. For you that do not know me, I take pride in doing my due diligence to better our community and local charities. I'm here today because our third annual Wisconsin Camaro Charity Show is supposed to be this weekend, and it means a lot to us, so much that I closed this afternoon, so I could be here. This event has raised thousands of dollars the last two years for cancer care in Sheboygan County and Guardians of Children Wisconsin chapter, local charities that hit homes for me. After working with the city in the past, I do understand the rules and deadlines that need to be followed, and I respect them wholeheartedly. I, at the beginning of April, dropped off two different event boundary, event and boundary extensions in the drop box outside the city hall, one for May eighteenth Saturday and one for June twenty-third. I received a notice from the city administrator on Saturday morning in the mail stating that permits were never received. I understand that things can be misplaced, so Monday I contacted the city to try to make this right, so we were abiding by the rules. This morning I was told by the city administrator that these permits would not be considered. I'm not asking for special treatment or another meeting, but what I do know is that with the twenty-four hour notice for the state statute, an amendment could have been made to tonight's meeting. Once again, I'm only here because these types of things mean so much to us and for non-selfish reasons. So my question tonight is, is there anything that could have been done with an amendment? And is there anything we can do as a city so this event can still happen to raise money for these charities? I also would like to add that in any event we have posted among normal business hours, we've never had any issues having to involve law enforcement, as we've always been law-abiding and respectful neighbors in the community. That is all.
So, thank you. What, was it just a time sequencing issue that is holding it up?
There was no receipt of any applications in April.
Okay. So it's a time issue.
If there was nothing received, then how did you know to reach out to Teresa?
I had a person come in from the community last week and ask if Stop and a Dime would have to put up a fence for their event this coming weekend. I said, what event this coming weekend? I have no paperwork, they must have no paperwork to do that, and if they do, and we grant a boundary extension, yes, a fence is required for the law.
So somebody else came in and made you aware of it?
Yep, yep.
And then you notified?
Yep. I discussed this with Chief Janty, and he recommended that as a city official, because we know about it, we should address it, which is what I did.
Can I ask? I do know that we have to have a special event. I did drop them off in the box. Same time as my utility bill, was addressed to the city administrator. I, like I said, I know the forty-five day deadline, so I did it beginning of April, because I did have an issue with that, with not understanding the deadline, so I don't know if it was replaced.
We did receive a utility payment, that was April seventeenth. So I did look, nothing else is missing from that date. We do not have any applications, and that would not be forty-five days as well.
So.
Is there anything we can do?
We could have a meeting later this week if we have a quorum. We have, our position as city officials is that we would not like to hold a special meeting, this would be the second year in a row that we have had to have a special meeting for this event in particular.
The same thing happened last year with this application. And we had a special meeting.
Yep.
It cost us about three hundred dollars to have a special meeting to approve this. Now it happens again. We can't, we can't abide by people getting their paperwork in incorrectly and constantly have special meetings for these things. So it's very unfortunate, I suggested to, to the owner that we, that she changed the date of her, of her event, and carry on from there. But there's, there's a point in time where you can't be, you know, going, going around your, your procedures with, with these things either. So that's, that was our stance today, and I'll take responsibility for it, and with Casey and Chief Janty also agreed with that, so we made that decision today.
I would like to make a comment and a suggestion, that on these applications for special event, that there be a separate section on their notice received, and who to mail it to, okay? So that when we get it, we have mailed that receipt back, so they know we have it. I think that's a reasonable thing to do. I'm not saying we've had a lot of problems in the past, but timing, sequencing can be a little interesting sometimes.
I'll say I'm usually in contact with all applicants.
And, and I get it, but this is something in writing.
Mm-hmm.
So that's where, that's where it is right now.
Okay. So, have-
And we discussed, we also discussed with this process that we would, if we had to go into special meetings, we might charge the person for the special meeting.
Which I totally understand, that's a business policy.
But, I don't understand why people can't get their paperwork in, in time. They know what the rules are, need to get it in. And we need, we need the process that the police department has to check out, check out these things, and make sure they're, they're legit, and make sure they're safe. And we need the time in the city to get, make sure these things are done correctly, too.
And that's what the forty-five days will be?
Yes.
So are you in time compliance with the June event?
I have to agree with that.
But if you get that done like tomorrow, it will be in time? So it would be the May event that you would need to reschedule?
Correct.
Is that possible for you?
My concern is the state, why saying I am not for it, it wouldn't work. I also thought of, you know, having a discussion about how we could still have the event. I talked to Chief Janty about possibly not having the boundary extension, not allowing alcohol outside, if it's the same setup as the last two years, but apparently that was not passed either.
So if there's not going to be alcohol outside, and we're not looking at a boundary extension, what is?
It's still, apparently it's still a special event.
Yep, if you want to be on city property.
If it's inside, it's still a special event.
My question would be how it would vary if a group of Corvette enthusiasts got together, went for a ride, and stopped in and set establishment.
That's no problem.
What's the difference with the, the-
You'd want a barricade off a street, correct, or an alley?
It's just an alley in front of the bar.
Okay, so we're looking at closing an alley?
Yep.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
But we could work around that if that was an option. We do not use that alley to park any vehicles, we just don't want anybody driving through that alley when we are driving across the path. It's basically to block off our parking lot in the back, behind the bar.
The paperwork still isn't, isn't in for a special event in time either, is it? I mean, it's not-
No, it's the forty-five days.
That's the forty-five day thing, so.
So, if they didn't block the alley, it would no longer be a special event, correct?
Yep, if you're not using city resources or city property and excluding others from using them.
So they could go ahead technically, as long as they don't block anything?
Right.
Pretty much all day I've been trying to, in my own head, figure out how to make it not against any ordinance, with the band, which is a two-piece band, I know Larry's little brother, but, they're not very rowdy gentlemen, so. To move them inside, so we don't have any noise ordinance, to not allow alcohol outside, to avoid the boundary extension, and not use these are valleys. But I don't want to do that, and then get in trouble if something was not done correctly.
That's okay.
Which is what I was trying to figure out, was something like that.
Yeah, as long as you're complying with every other angle and requirement of the ordinances to hold it in this way, you could probably still keep your date all right. But you got to keep things under control.
Or I monitor that.
I support that.
Nobody can stop you from having a bunch of cogitants coming in.
Just, we're getting sort of a little, this is a public comment, so nothing's on the agenda in this, so, so if there can be comment, council shouldn't be taking any action, it's a public comment, nothing's on the agenda, so, so remind the council.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay. All right, any other public comment tonight? Okay, number six, consideration of Keel Lions and Optimist Club's proposed building donation at City Park. The park board recommended approval five zero.
Good evening to you all again, want to thank you for your time tonight. Been working very diligently to come up with a plan for the city park across the street, so we can store a lot of different things in there for the Keel community picnic, and also be able to utilize it for the parks, the park, and things like that, for other organizations to utilize versus having all these different trailers coming in and all that stuff, eliminate a lot of that. Obviously, the picnic rose every year, she has a drawing up on the thing here. Drexel is the one that's put it together for us. We would serve, obviously, the front elevation up on top is the eight windows that they would serve the food out of, those windows do come out during the picnic, and then do go back in at the end of the picnic. There is going to be an overhang on the front, on the right side there, you can see, it's like a six-foot overhang, so they don't have the sun beating on them all the time, and it'll help if it does rain, we do have a little protection there. And then obviously, the garage door and stuff that would be on the south side, that we can utilize to put the equipment in and all that stuff, and then also the golf carts.
This is a new building, Stacy?
This is the new building, it's a brand new building.
It doesn't take the place of that?
Nope, nope, this is brand new.
Still going to use it?
We're still going to use it, there's still going to be stuff there, so-
So where would this new building-
This is actually going to go on the south side of the bar stand that's there, where we have the beer, we call it the beer stand. I apologize by these terms that you guys might not know, but the beer stand that's there, where Dave is usually at, would be on the south side, from there to the south to the alley. We measured it out-
There's enough room here to put-
Yeah.
So it'd be the far side of that sidewalk that goes out to Fifth Street?
Yep. We measured it with Ian and Casey and all that stuff, so everything would be compliant, staying twenty-five feet off the alley, all that stuff. We're actually a little more, so it'd be twenty-seven wide, what the shelter is now, and thirty-four in width. With that process, we are going to rip up the concrete around the existing structure that's bad, and that is going to be all replaced, that are the costs, we're taking care of that. So it's going to be nobody else in the city to do that.
So, this would be an extension of the existing building?
It would be two separate buildings that would go down into the street, and then start to the south.
So, but up against it, but-
But the concrete around the existing structure is really bad, obviously, so we want to get that in place. There are some people that trip over and down, and it's not like that, that's all. We're going to replace that, we want to replace it all and get it up to the way it should be.
I do have a question. I understand you're going to pop out those eight windows while you're serving. You have some way of closing that off overnight? You have like a dropdown, or you just pop the windows back?
The windows are going to stay out, but actually, last time we talked to Chief Janty, he recommended, obviously, when we work with Dave and stuff, they're constantly monitoring the park anyways through the night, so they would rather have it open and lock everything up.
Oh. So those windows would just be open space?
We would just take them out, and then at the end of the picnic, they would go back in.
And, what's going to be in that building?
They would come out on Thursday and go back in Monday morning.
Right, but what's going to be in that building?
The only thing that'll be in that building that won't be locked up is just Nesko's.
Okay, so all of the alcohol and all of the-
The alcohol is not kept in anywhere in that building.
Okay.
So. And our Nesko's are never locked up, no, the way they are, where they sit all on the alcohol. Correct.
Oh, I'm not worried about Nesko's.
We've already promised.
I'm just curious about kids getting in there and making a mess.
Right. Yeah, very understandable. According to this structure, as you can see here, this drawing, that little garage door, there'd be a big garage door in the back, and a little garage door on the north side, that we would be able to roll our soda coolers and everything out to start the picnic, and then put them away once we're done. Right there, and then there would be three windows on the west side, and they're going to be higher up windows, just so we can open them for air. So.
So you would actually be serving out of the east side?
West side, west side. East side is, those are just upper windows, way up high.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you just said west side.
West side we're going to serve out of.
Right.
East side will be those three windows up on top, so we get the air flow through.
That's what I was picturing, but then I thought you said west side would be the three windows.
Right, right.
That's what I wanted to clarify. So it's going to face the rest of the park?
Yep, yep, and it's going to be stone facing this way, so it's going to go up to the window bottom, all the way across, so it looks uniform, and it's going to be uniform with the pillars that are on the existing structure. So, and then we did figure in a steel roof, Mayor Steiner and I talked about that, we have that all figured in, we're looking between a hundred and a hundred and ten thousand dollars to cover some of it, with all the concrete, which will-
Very nice, nice contribute.
Correct.
Wow. When does this start?
All depends.
Huh?
So, we're working on some things right now, so. Obviously, we- We'll be detailed after the picnic. Yeah, we're probably going to do it after the picnic, to make it easier for everybody, that's, everything that's going on in the park, throw up a something. All our vendors are, the people doing the work are all local, so it's good.
Awesome.
Did you look at any other alternatives to glass, or the type of glass that you're-
We're actually putting tempered glass in, and all that stuff, so that it would be very, 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 very hard. It's actually what Drexel recommended. Yep. So.
Well.
You have put it off for contractors already?
We-
You've got bids for-
We've got everything set over there.
Okay.
We just need the final approval, and then we can start the process of getting anybody started.
I do have to say, I'm a little leery about those windows being open, but if you talked with Chief Funkhauser, and he said that it was okay, I felt that that was the better way to go. I guess I will make the motion then, that we approve the Keel Lions and Optimist Club proposed building donation at City Park with the plans so demonstrated tonight.
I second that one.
And I thank you, gentlemen, very much for all of your work.
Thank you very much. We appreciate how many ways it's done for us over the years, so.
Okay, any other discussion on this?
Think it'd be a great improvement.
Yeah, absolutely.
A lot easier to move their equipment in and out, and you wouldn't have the trailers sitting there.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay, we've got a motion by Schudie and second by Gil to approve the Keel Lions and Optimist Club's proposed building donation at City Park for the drawings shown. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Everything.
All right, consideration of ordinance six eleven, amending chapter twelve, direct seller language update.
This is an update put together by Chief Janty that redoes some of the processes and procedures surrounding direct sellers, so he has updated the fee to sixty dollars per month, and then also has updated the processes and what he can look at when reviewing applications.
And if I'm not mistaken, this was the new language suggested by the state, correct?
He talked to several municipalities, I don't know that it was the state, but he did.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to adopt and approve ordinance six eleven with the amending of chapter twelve, the direct seller language update.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, further discussion on this one? Okay, motion by Broker, second by Krieger, to approve ordinance six eleven, amending chapter twelve for direct seller language update. Roll call Gil.
Hey.
Broker?
Yes.
Schudie?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Okter?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. All right, the consideration of ordinance six thirteen, amending chapter fourteen of the building code.
This next ordinance change brings our chapter fourteen building code up to state standards with our new building inspector. We had to file new delegation forms with the state, and to do that, we had to, we have to update our building code. So you'll see, I made quite a few changes. One big one of note is that any reference to the State Department of Commerce has now been changed to the State Department of Safety and Professional Services. And then we have updated any references to codes that are outdated, or things that are no longer in place. And then- And then, we also needed to adopt this fourteen oh six camping unit in order to have, um, our, our city adopt the universal dwelling code, we have to adopt that as well. Um, I did review this with the DSPS, and they have, they are good to go with this draft, and they are just waiting on official approval. This just brings really us up to date.
I'll make a motion to adopt and approve ordinance six thirteen with the amendments to chapter fourteen for the building codes.
Second.
Any further discussion on this? Okay, motion by Broker, second by Octor to approve the ordinance six thirteen, amending chapter fourteen of the building code. Roll call Gill.
Yes.
Broker.
Yes.
Shudey.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Number nine, consideration of MSA Master Professional Services Agreement.
Our general manager of utilities is looking at working with MSA to design the utility portion of the Fremont Street project that will be taking place in 2029. Um, so this master agreement just gets, um, something overhanging in place between us and them so that we can begin to work on it. I know it's five years from now, but we do have to start designing the utility, um, stuff now for that project.
This is a general agreement with them, and we'll get specific agreements on costs and things like that, so.
Motion to approve the master professional service agreement with MSA as proposed.
Second.
Any further discussion on this one? Motion by Broker, second by Shudey to approve the MSA Master Professional Services Agreement as proposed. Let's do a roll call on this one, too. Gill.
Yes.
Broker.
Yes.
Shudey.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes.
Yes.
Five zero, motion carries. Number ten, consideration of the twenty twenty-five per capita rate of seven dollars and thirty-six cents for the Keel ambulance service.
We are proposing to do a rate increase on our per capita, um, fee for other municipalities and the City of Keel that use the, um, Keel ambulance service. Since two thousand and eleven, the per capita rate has been, um, three twenty-five, and we are proposing to move that up to seven thirty-six. Um, we are hoping, calculating out that this will fund, um, the costs needed to make four of our paramedics full-time. So that's the intent is for the change.
And this, this has been presented, Chief, if you're back there, this has been presented to all the people that are contracted with the services, and they- Yeah.
And, and also the, um, committee, uh, Fire Police and EMS committee all agree, so, are in support of this.
I make a motion to approve the increase to seven thirty-six.
Second.
Hopefully that will stem some of the overtime for events.
Okay, more, uh, any more discussion on this one?
I just got one question.
Sure.
When we talked about the per capita rate increase, okay, so you've got family A, it might be just, uh, a single property owner, and you've got another family B that's got half a dozen children, plus a husband and wife, that's just spread across the whole, the whole taxpayer base.
Yeah, it's, it's based on the population of the community.
There's no differentiation for how many people occupy a household, it's just averaged out and then split evenly.
Right. Okay, any other questions? Okay, motion by Gill, second by Shudey to approve the twenty twenty-five per capita rate of seven thirty-six for the Keel ambulance service. All in favor is signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Number eleven, consideration of lawnmower quote, uh, Skag Turf Tiger II in the amount of nineteen thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars and twenty cents.
Um, our DPW got a couple quotes for different lawnmowers. We did budget to borrow for a lawnmower this year. The, um, placeholder amount we used in the budget was twenty-five thousand dollars, um, and that was approved, so we actually came in almost six thousand dollars under that, which is great. Um, the DPW folks did go out and test different lawnmowers, and this model in particular had a lower center of gravity than what they've got right now, which will help as they, um, are mowing anything that is-
Hills.
Yep. And we've got a few.
I'll make the motion, we approve the purchase of a Skag Turf Tiger II in the amount of nineteen thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars and twenty cents for the DPW.
I second.
Got a motion by, uh, Shudey, second by Gill to approve the lawnmower purchase of a Skag Turf Tiger II in the amount nineteen thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars and twenty cents. All in favor is signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Number twelve, consideration of roof repair quote, uh, Dave Worcester Roof Services LLC in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, five hundred, this is for the fire, fire department. We had some issues with the wa, rough leaking for a couple of years now.
A couple of years, yeah. The only thing that Casey and I talked about this morning was he doesn't have the warranty in it. He doesn't have it in here, I, I would think that we could maybe just make a motion to accept this and contingent that he provides-
Provides warranty?
Accept the warranty?
We have, so we did get a verbal warranty from Mr. Worcester Barth for ten years for material, two years for labor, and, um, Chief Pennington and I would like to recommend that we accept this quote contingent upon just getting this in writing.
And just to make sure, we have this already earmarked in the budget?
Correct, we did, well, we budgeted for the repair to the fire department roof. I am happy to say we budgeted eighty thousand dollars that we'll be borrowing for, too, so we did come in under here as well.
Awesome, I will make the motion that we accept, um, Dave Worcester Barth Roof Services LLC, uh, roof, re-roofing of the fire department in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, five hundred dollars, pending the, um, uh, presentation of warranty to, uh, to the administrator.
For ten years material and two years labor?
Ten years material and two years labor.
That was, that was late, hold on a second.
Yeah, I think you should put, make sure the motion is, um, written in the terms of ten years and two years.
Yeah.
Okay, I just added it.
Yep.
Thank you, Gary.
I got it.
Okay, you got a second?
I did.
Okay.
I'd like to discuss a little further, just to make sure we, uh, cross our Ts and not our Is. The other quote that we got, correct me if I'm wrong, was from my altitude?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, was there any warranty associated with that?
No. I didn't see any warranty on anything.
Okay.
It was a hundred and ten thousand, this is seventy-eight five, so it's like thirty thousand dollars.
Okay, I'm sorry, what, what was the altitude quote?
Hundred and ten thousand.
Hundred and ten, okay.
And, and as I recall, after looking at the documentation, the documentation we received from Dave Worcester Barth Roof Services, uh, was much more, um-
Itemized.
Itemized than the other.
And his quote also, if there's any insulation that's really bad or anything, it's in his quote, there will be no additions or add-ons, this is the quote, so everybody's aware of that, okay? You know how it goes when it's like, oh, we found this and found that, and, you know? So, I, I trust everyone. He's been down there probably five or six times for fixing leaks and stuff, he's never charged, you see?
Okay.
Yeah.
Any more discussion on this? Motion by Shudey, second by Broker to accept the roof repair quote from Dave Worcester Roof Services LLC in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, five hundred dollars, uh, with this, with a ten-year material and a two-year labor warranty?
Written warranty.
Written warranty, which we will get, right? Roll call Gill.
Yes.
Broker.
Yes.
Shudey.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes.
Octor.
Yes.
Five zero, motion carries. Uh, consideration of Mayor Steiner's appointment of Jason Meyer to the Economic Development Committee, uh, the Tourism, the Tourism Commission. Uh, Mr. Meyer is a, uh, employee of, uh, Len Wakes, and he has agreed to, uh, he's been doing some work with the Downtown Development Committee. He was highly recommended to, uh, be on his committee, and, uh, we have an open position, so we're appointing him to that committee, looking for your approval.
Motion to approve the mayor's appointment of Jason Meyer to the Economic Development Committee.
Second. Motion by Broker, second by Krieger to approve the mayor's appointment of Jason Meyer to the Economic Development Committee Tourism Commission. All in favor is signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I, I was just going to say that I, I think this is a wonderful outreach and perhaps a, a bridge building between us and Len Wakes of the city. So I, I highly approve of this.
Okay, um, consideration of wage progression for Randy Smith Jr.?
Um, so Randy Smith Jr. was up for his annual review, he, um, had a good annual review. The general manager of utilities discussed that a little more in depth at our committee of the whole meeting, but currently, this employee is at nine percent of their current wage band. With a good review, our policy is that they go up one decile. Um, that would bring him to a wage of thirty-three oh two for his wage band progression for twenty twenty-four.
I'll make that motion to have Randy Smith's wage progression approved.
No, second.
At thirty, what, what did you say?
Three oh two.
Thirty-three oh two?
Yep. Okay, you got a second?
Oh, yes, Randy Smith Jr.
Okay, we've got a motion by Octor, second by Gill to approve the wage progression, for Randy Smith Jr. to thirty-three oh two in Hora. All in favor is signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Uh, consideration of hiring Ally Markham as the twenty twenty-four seasonal staff contingent upon pre-employment checks.
Um, Ally Markham is the individual I, um, brought up at the last committee of the whole meeting who was interested, and we have certainly work for her to do. She is currently in school, um, for environmental sciences and environmental studies. Um, she has experience with GIS, and she, um, is very interested in learning more about the wastewater treatment plant, and talking with, um, the general manager of utilities, he has plenty of work at the wastewater treatment plant that he can, um, use her for. And I know certainly with our DPW, um, side, there's plenty of GIS mapping we can do, too. She is only available to work the month of June, um, but I think it would be a win-win to bring her on board.
For one month?
For one month.
I'll make a motion to approve Ally Markham for seasonal staff contingent upon the pre-employment checks for the month of June.
I'll second.
Motion by Gill, second by Shudey to approve the hiring of Ally Markham as a twenty twenty-four seasonal staff. Employee contingent upon pre-employment checks for the month of June. All in favor is signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Number sixteen, uh, consideration of boundary extension application, Keel's, uh, Mike's Keel Lounge for August eighth through eleventh.
The only thing I will share is this is essentially my backyard. I have no problem with it, but I think I should abstain from both.
You may do that if you like.
Well, in years past, there were issues with, um, people relieving themselves in our bushes. The dog went a little crazy. What can I say?
Um, he has filled out the, um, application in full, we have a map from him, and he has-
And it's on time.
And he has confirmed that he will have a fence put up as required by the order.
I was just going to say, a fence I saw in the drawing.
Yep. Yep, and he has been told that that is a requirement, so. And he is fully good with that.
And, and like I said, in the last years, we have had no issues with Mike. Prior to that, it was interesting.
Do you have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the boundary extension application by Mike's Keel Lounge for August eighth through eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Motion by Octor, second by Broker to approve the boundary extension application for Mike's Keel Lounge, August eighth through eleventh, twenty twenty-four. All in favor is signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose.
I abstain.
Boundary extension, okay. Uh, seventeen, approve receipts and dispersments?
Move to approve receipts and dispersments?
Second.
Motion by Krieger, second by Broker to approve receipts and dispersments. All in favor is signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries, approve bills.
Move to approve and pay all bills?
Second.
Motion by Krieger, second by Gill to pay all bills. Roll call Gill.
Yes.
Broker.
Yes.
Shudey.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes.
Octor.
Yes.
Five zero, motion carries, and adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Krieger, second by Broker to adjourn, all in favor is signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. We are adjourned, thank you.